As long as it's not one that people...
Not your question, Ms. Yen.
Not that. Oh, good evening, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. This is the May 23 zoning board in Chatham meeting pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID measures adopted by the state of emergencies, spending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings provided far in the order. As a reminder, those who would like to listen to this meeting while it's in progress may do so by calling 508-945-4410, conference ID 296-135-466-POUND, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue, hearing, or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. To validate and make sure everybody approves this form of meeting, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Virginia Fenwick.
Virginia approves.
Please shut off all devices that make any sort of noise, including vibration. Thank you. Steve?
Steve DeBoer approves.
Lee Hovey approves.
Paul C. Simple, I approve.
David S. Nixon approves.
David H. Veatch, I approve.
And Randy Podash, I approve as well. If any citizens or non-board members participating in the call via the phone only, please give your name and the last four digits of your phone number for identification purposes. The way the meeting is run is as follows. A hearing notice is read by our staff, Sarah Clark on my right, and you, or your representative, will present the appeal or application. Anyone in favor of the appeal or application may speak for a limited time of five minutes. I will read and summarize all the letters received by the board. Anyone against the appeal or application, or has a question, will be able to ask that. Then the applicant will be able to rebut any testimony. Board members will ask questions, and they can ask questions to anyone present. We'll hear further information, close the public hearing, deliberate. Usually, we vote on the appeal or application, and then all votes will be taken by roll call. At the end of the meeting, we'll close with a verbal confirmation and note the time of adjournment. See if we have any minutes. We have a minutes pile for April 25, 2024.
I believe we have minutes for April 25, 2024. I will move to approve those as published.
Is there anybody that has an edit? If not, Dave?
I second the motion.
And your vote?
And my vote, yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Paul votes yes.
As do I. Okay. First application.
We're going to take them out of order.
Oh, yeah, we're going to take them out of order today. Well, just one is coming out of order. We're going to go with Cape Cod 5-Cent Savings Bank, application 24-049 to accommodate the applicant. We're going, you're going first. Yes, please.
Application number 24-049, Cape Cod 5-Cent Savings Bank, care of Catherine Anastasia, 125 Samuel Barnett Boulevard, New Bedford, Mass., 02745. Owner of property located at 548 Main Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 15D Block 29, Lot 104. The applicant seeks an appeals permit under Section 225-19 of the Chatham Sign Bylaw to allow the placement of an 8-inch-by-60-inch, 3.33 square foot wall sign and a 36-inch-by-30-inch wall sign, 7.5 square feet, not facing a street frontage, and a 12-inch-by-24-inch, 2 square feet, secondary wall sign facing Main Street. The lot contains 14,966 square feet in the GB1 zoning district. The proposed signs require an appeals permit under Section 225-19 of the Chatham Sign Bylaw.
Hello, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Please just state your name and...
Richard Poyant signs some here on behalf of Catherine, who submitted the application, and Cape Cod 5. So we have three accessory signs that we're seeking approval for, labeled on the plan as sign number two, and nine, and three. So if we could talk about this first sign, the ATM sign. This is to replace an existing sign that is over the ATM machine, and the whole purpose of the plaque is to identify that this is the ATM machine for customers who are approaching the building. This is 1 foot high by 2 feet wide, and it's a very simple sign. The next sign is on our plan, sign 3A.
We're going to make sure you have the criteria to go through.
Okay.
It shouldn't be particularly difficult, and we'll give you whatever time you need.
Okay. Yes, so we're requesting the ATM sign is a secondary wall sign, which is because it's, and it doesn't face a street, and so, but we need to label, we need to identify the machine itself, and so people can find it. The site, the specific site of the location of the sign is appropriate because of the purpose of that sign is to identify the machine. It will not be a nuisance or a hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, actually, it'll assist folks who are trying to locate the ATM machine. The proposed sign will not adversely affect properties in the neighborhood. It's a very conservative sign in and of itself, and the special requirements for the permit are in accord with the general spirit and intent of the bylaw. Any questions?
What about the second one? Do you have to go through that?
The second one? Sure.
Yep.
The second sign, you mean?
Please.
Yeah, okay. So the second sign is the, is a clearance sign to be installed, or replace the existing clearance sign on the drive-through canopy, the override canopy. So this is a pretty standard type of sign that helps to reduce liability and to indicate to traffic coming through that there is a height limit. So for tall vans, or sometimes folks who are hauling a boat on a trailer behind them, just to warn them that there is a height limit and what that height limit is. The proposed sign is 8 inches high and 6 feet wide, which allows us to put a 4-inch-high message on it, so make it as readable and clear as possible, so they can see it from a distance and pull out of the lane before they get there if they need to. The, again, the sign, this sign doesn't face a street, so that's why we're here to ask for permission to install it. The site is appropriate for proposed sign. It's a very logical place to put it. The proposed sign will not be a nuisance or a hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and actually will improve safety. The proposed sign will not adversely affect the properties in the neighborhood. It's pretty modest, and the special requirements for the permit are in accord with the general spirit and intent of the bylaw. Any questions?
One more.
Okay. I know that. I didn't know if there were any questions about this.
Oh, no, we'll get to the questions.
Okay. So the third request is for an operation hours plaque to be installed beside the secondary entrance, and this secondary entrance is for the parking area. So customers who come into the lot and park in the parking area behind the branch, this entrance is accessible by them. And so we have one on the primary entrance, which is on the other side of the building, and we're allowed that one by right. Because we have a secondary entrance, it's very helpful to let potential customers know what the operating hours are of the lobby and of the driveway. This proposed sign is 2 and 1/2 feet wide and 3 feet tall, and we're able to update those hours when they change along the way, and it helps to identify that this is actually a customer entrance as well by providing this identification. The location of this sign is appropriate for its application. The sign won't be a nuisance or a hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. The proposed sign will not adversely affect the neighborhood, and the special requirements for the permit are in accord with the general spirit and intent of the bylaw. So those are the three signs that we're requesting.
Okay, great.
Permission for...
Yeah, thank you so much. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please make it known. Seeing none, or seeing what? No, nope, seeing none. I will read the single correspondence that we have from the HBDC, the Historic Business District Commission. The commission writes to us on May 7, 2024, that they issued a certificate of appropriateness on April 18, 2024, for each of the following wall signs. Clearance, 7 feet 6 inch wall sign rear of the drive-through structure, ATM wall sign above the ATM machine, hours of operation, wall sign rear of the structure. Thank you. Signed, Chantel Kilkeny. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against or has a question about this application? Please make it known. If you do, seeing none. Questions from the board? Dave Veatch?
I have no questions.
Dave Nixon?
No questions.
Ginny?
No questions.
Steve?
No questions.
Lee?
No questions.
Paul? No questions.
And nor do I. Paul?
I will move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Lee? No, I'm sorry.
Paul votes yes.
As do I. So deliberations. Paul?
Well, it's clearly made all of the standards for the sign appeal, and will be consistent with the general spirit and intent of the bylaw, so I'll move to approve.
Dave Veatch seconds.
Other deliberations?
Oh, right. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Before we go there, deliberations.
Dave Nixon or Dave?
No, Dave Veatch.
Oh, yeah. I fully concur with what Paul had to say. I agree.
Okay, and Dave Nixon?
Well, I'm not a great believer in too many signs, and I, the sign about hours of operation, when you go up the door and it's locked, it's probably closed. I mean, you don't need a sign to tell you it's closed, and you're going to go up to the door and try to, you're going to try and get in. So I would not be in favor of that one.
Of that one, or just the one? Okay. Ginny?
I agree with Paul. I think that they're appropriate and they're more clear, and I think because that third sign is, it almost looked in one of the pictures like it was on a post, but it isn't. It's on, it's on the wall, and the wall faces away from the street, so you really are going into the bank, or trying to go into the bank, to see it, so I think it's okay.
Steve?
I think all the signs are fine. I think they're replacing existing signs, and they're much more easily read, I think, with the white background and the darker letters. I don't have a problem.
Lee?
I agree. I think all the signs are appropriate and an improvement.
I think they're passable, so I think we'll vote now.
And Veatch votes yes.
Dave?
Well...
For a sign? All right, well, we're going to do that, then. We're going to vote one sign at a time.
All right, well, then I, I will move for approval of the application with respect to the sign that says ATM.
Okay. Dave Veatch?
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
And how do you vote? And Dave Nixon?
Yes.
And Ginny?
Yes.
Paul? All votes yes.
As do I. Okay. That one passes unanimously.
I will move to approve the application for the sign which deals with clearance.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
Clearance? How do you vote?
Well, I'm going to vote yes, but nobody ever pays attention to that, just going to Starwood Drive, you know? I mean, these are pros. They're looking at something else, they're not looking up, and they're not thinking.
It could be an insurance issue.
That is why they're doing, that's right. They don't care, but they have to do it.
Okay.
So yes, I voted yes.
All right.
I vote yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
And I'll vote yes on that one, too. That's unanimous.
And I will move to approve the sign which depicts the hours of operation.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
And Dave Nixon?
No.
Ginny?
Yes.
Paul votes yes.
And I'm going to vote no on that, because I think everybody has a cellphone and Google on it, and if you want to know when it's open, then you can always do that. So I'm going to go along with Dave Nixon on that, so that's no. So, thank you. Yep, yep, take your time. Less is more, right? All right, Sarah, whenever you're ready, we'll go to the first application on the list, 414 Fox Hill Road.
Application number 23-120, Christopher J. LaCroix and Kathleen M. LaCroix, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 414 Fox Hill Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 11M Block 5, Lot 2. The applicant seeks to reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming private residential pier. The existing pier is non-conforming in that it is 112 feet long. The proposed reconstructed pier will be non-conforming in that it will be 112 feet long where 80 feet is the maximum allowed. The property is located in an R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master and Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw. This was continued from January 11 and March 14, 2024.
Welcome, Mr. Riley.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of the LaCroix family. The property owned by the LaCrocys has had a dock in Crow's Pond since the 1930s. Over the years, it's been shortened from its original licensed length of 200 feet to down to 110 feet. Cole Bateman of Ty &amp; Bond, formerly Coastal Engineering, is here to answer technical questions. The reason we're here is that we're not replacing the dock exactly in kind. It's a little wider, and it's got handrails, so I'll ask Cole to address those design features.
Good afternoon, Cole Bateman. I'm a professional engineer with Ty &amp; Bond, along here with Bill. And if the plans aren't up on screen, I'll share them right now. I'll cut right to the chase for the sections. The existing pier, I believe, only has handrail on one side of it. The new pier will have handrails on both sides, and as you can see, it will be rather a lot more safe than the previously existing pier, and also flat. The existing pier has a bit of a dip at the start, and the proposed replacement pier is consistent height all the way down, so the goal of this project was to make a safer pier for grandchildren and the uses of it, the structure itself, and to update building materials to that, which has not deteriorated. Thank you.
Thank you, Cole. The, I point out, their application is for the pier only. The, there's no float and dock, no float and ramp associated with our requirement today. The, one of those regulatory things where even though the pier's been licensed since the 1930s, when they shortened the length of the pier back in the 1950s probably, they did not apply for an amendment to the license. As a consequence, when they added a ramp and float at the end, back sometime in the 1950s, they did not get an amended license. So under the regulations for Pleasant Bay, no new structures, no new pier structures are allowed, and the Pleasant Bay Alliance, in their infinite wisdom, decided that even though there's been a ramp and float there since the mid-1950s, it qualified as a new structure. So Conservation Commission was not in a position to approve a ramp and float, and the Chapter 91 people would also be prohibited from approving a ramp and float. So what we have is 110-foot, 110-foot-long pier with railings that we're asking you to approve.
Is it 112, or is it 110?
Cole, what's the length?
I think the question, it depends on the jurisdiction. I believe, is the jurisdiction from mean-high water? If so, it would be 90 feet from mean-high water, and the overall pier length is 110.
Yes, we, our bylaw regulates that it's measured from mean-high water.
So the answer would be 90 feet.
All right, so now, I didn't bother passing out a zoning bylaw analysis. I don't think this is particularly complex, but there is criteria in Section Roman numeral 8 under administration, which is slightly different than the criteria used in the hearing, so I'll just do a quick run-through. So adequacy of the size of the site for the proposed use. We've got plenty of room for our 4-foot-wide dock. Suitability of the site for the proposed use. There's been a dock there since the 1930s. Impact on traffic flow and safety, none. Impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. Some people think docks are attractive, so to that extent, we think it improves the view. There's no sewage disposal, there's no utilities, and there may be some children having fun that might contribute to noise, but we don't expect any litter, and it's compatible with surrounding land uses.
Okay. Is that your presentation? Yes? Anything? Okay.
That's it.
So is, anybody else want to speak on this? Are you all set?
We're all set.
All right, good to know. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate. Seeing none, I will read the correspondence. There are a few. Jason Holm, our harbor master, writes on May 9, 2024, "I reviewed the application for the proposed pier at 414 Fox Hill Road in Crow's Pond Harbor and found that the reconstruction of the existing non-conforming 112-foot pier will not interfere with the navigation or pose any public safety issues. The pier would also not interfere with any existing moorings within the area." If you have any questions, please call. Next, we have a letter from Christine McCarthy, our collections assistant for the Town of Chatham. um, our collections assistant for the Town of Chatham. Attached to will find a passable balance run today for 414 Fox Hill Road. "They currently have an outstanding balance on their FY '24 real estate tax. Thank you in advance for your assistance." It looks like $13,561.47.
That's already been paid.
Very good. Next, we have a letter from the Conservation Commission from May 6th, 2024. They write, "The commission has issued an order of conditions for the pier replacement, as revised on April 3rd, 2024. And April 24th, 2024, the project as proposed has been, uh, conditioned to meet the performance standard under the Wetlands Protection Act and the Town of Chatham's Wetland Bylaw." That concludes the correspondence. Is everybody here on Microsoft, on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against or has a question about this application? Seeing none. Questions from the board? Ginny?
I have a question for Cole. Cole, when I watched the, um, conservation hearing, you indicated that part of it, well, I think you were referencing 110 feet, not 90, but 50 of it was permanent and 60 was seasonal, or maybe I have that. But could you address how much of this pier is gonna be required to be taken out every year? And then can you talk about what that process is and where it's stored?
Charlie, very good question. So, as designed, there's a 50-foot permanent portion of the pier, uh, and that's consistent with what's currently there. And then there is a 60-foot portion that is seasonal, also consistent with the current conditions. The seasonal pier would, um, be removed and, uh, kept upland. I believe it's either going to be in the parking area of the dwelling or an off-site storage, um, from the removal contractor, uh, and then installed similar to other piers every, every year, um, in, in place of the existing. I mean, they, they have a template to go off of because there's a permanent pier. So, location of the seasonal portions should be rather, uh, simple. The work would be done by barge, um, and while working with the contractor, uh, the construction of the pier would probably be, um, segmented panels, supported by, uh, individual piled vents that would be set into the substrate. And then the, the panels would be laid on and, and handrail components attached.
Steve, questions?
I guess I have a couple of questions. The, the, the structure that's there looks pretty rough, like it was damaged some time ago. It hasn't been used in a long time.
No, it hasn't been used.
Really?
Yeah. I don't know if they used it last summer, but up until last summer, it was used every summer.
Because it does look like it's, it's in need of repair.
And that's why they wanna replace it. Because they, uh, Mr. La Croix said, hey, he's getting older. They have grandchildren. They wanna make sure everything's safe.
So, the, the, the main question I have, I guess, um, is that, and I'm glad that you explained the Chapter 91 stuff because I was gonna ask you about the licensing for, for the pier. And apparently, it's, it's lapsed and there's some issue about
No, it hasn't.
Getting it corrected.
No, it hasn't lapsed. They, they shortened the pier. It's within the footprint, so it continues as a licensed structure.
So, my, I guess my, my question is that since the pier is being totally rebuilt and you're not, it doesn't look like you're gonna have a gangway right now or a float, why not bring it into compliance and make it 80 feet long instead of 112 feet long?
Because they need water at the outport end of the pier for boats to come alongside.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That's all right.
Lee?
No questions.
Paul?
I see that we have input from Conservation and the harbor master. I'm wondering whether there's any input from the shellfish warden.
We haven't received any. All I can say is that the pier has been there since the 1930s. So typically, shellfish gets involved when we're proposing something new or something that changes. I'm sure they received notice from Conservation, uh, and probably from CBA, and they've elected not to reply.
So, we've received no comment from shellfish. Is that correct?
We did not receive any comment. I'm just seeing if we had one for the other meeting. We did not, um, but it was requested.
Okay. Thank you.
Dave Nixon, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Riley, um, I'm sorry that they're not gonna have the ramp and the float. And is it a dead issue or is there some appeal process you can go through?
The, uh, what we've, what we've been in conversation with the harbor master is there is a different license that he can issue. That will allow for a ramp and a much smaller float. And that's what we anticipate is gonna happen. So, it's not, it's, it's a license that has to be renewed annually. So, it's not like a Chapter 91 license, which is good for many, many years.
So, I presume you're gonna pursue that?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay. Thank you.
Sarah has a comment about that.
More of a question. Would you need to come back and modify this special permit to allow for the ramp and float since that's included in the overall length section of our zoning bylaw?
No, the, my understanding, you take it up with the harbor master, that this is the same, uh, this, this permit that would be issued under the harbor master's ability to issue moorings, uh, which have to be renewed every year. So, that's my understanding. So, the answer is no, we would not be coming back. I mean, for instance,
Well, go ahead.
There isn't an example, Mr. Rakdon isn't here, but on the property that he has down on, uh, Minister's Point, he received a similar license for a ramp and a float from the top of the seawall.
I'm just gonna ask the building commissioner to clarify his understanding.
Well, I thought the ramp, uh, length included the, uh, well, the overall pier length included the ramp and the float. So, I'd have to check into that. I don't have an answer for you right now.
Okay. Questions? Who didn't, who didn't I ask? Mr. Veach?
And, and I have no questions.
I already went on this side, yes. So, I just wanna clarify, are you asking for it to be 90 feet, 112 or 110? Because I've heard a lot of numbers and, like you, I am not a numbers person, so.
I know. The plan calls for a pier that is a dock. It's 110 feet long from the beginning to the end.
Right.
So, that's what we're seeking.
You are, okay. So, we don't take a long walk off of a short pier?
Or a short walk off a long pier, one or the other, yeah.
All right, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
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 All votes yes.
As do I. Deliberations? Lee?
Well, I, I agree. It's a shame that what's happened, um, but I think, you know, it's been there forever. And, um, to rebuild it is a wise decision, um, because it's a valuable, it's a valuable thing. So, I, if I were voting today, I would, I would be in favor of it.
Steve, what about you?
Um, the same. I mean, it's, it's unusable the way it is now. And Bill has explained why it needs to be the way it's going to be. And apparently, it was at least that long before. So, it's replacing something that was there previous. So, I would probably vote to approve it.
Ginny?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. I think it's extremely valuable. You can't get another one today. Um, I'm sorry to see the float. Hope that works out. And, uh, it's much shorter than it used to be many years ago. So, um, I, I would support it.
Dave Veach?
Yeah, I, I agree with all previous. And, you know, I, I'm hopeful that they are able to find a way to work it out, have it work a little better for them. And because it is, um, too bad that the circumstances are such that, uh, they weren't able to get the whole thing from us. But, um, but I, I certainly will support this.
Okay. Dave Nixon?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, Paul?
I agree with Mr. Riley that, uh, shellfish would need, uh, in, input if this were a new pier, but I guess not on this one. So, um, I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
And I'll just say that I think the questions and the answers were, were superb today on this and I appreciate your preparedness.
Thank you.
And, uh, okay.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Paul?
All votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, whenever Sarah's ready, we're gonna go to 108 Beach Plum Road.
Application number 24-043, R. Paul Dweller, care of James M. Norcross Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 108 Beach Plum Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 4D Block 16 Lot 23. The applicant proposes to change, alter, expand two non-conforming dwellings on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwellings and the construction of two new dwellings. One of the existing dwellings is non-conforming and that is located within the coastal conservancy district. And the second dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 31 feet from the coastal conservancy district. One of the proposed dwellings will be non-conforming in that it will be located within the coastal conservancy district. And the second dwelling will be non-conforming in that it will be located 34 feet from the coastal conservancy district where a 50-foot setback is required. The total existing building coverage is 1,438 square feet. And the proposed total building coverage is 1,750 square feet, where 2,850 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming and that it contains zero feet, feet of frontage where 100 feet is required and contains sufficient buildable upland for, upland area for one dwelling. The lot contains 21,600 square feet of buildable upland area and 94,000 square feet of land area in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master and Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5 via the protective bylaw.
Welcome, Attorney Norcross.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Jamie Norcross, representing Paul Detweiler. Paul is here in the audience today in the front with the blue shirt. Uh, also here today is Greg DeLorey, who did the building design, and David Clark, who's been handling the engineering for the project. Paul has owned this property for just over three years now. He bought it in April of 2021. It has two dwellings on it that date back according to the assessor to 1930 and 1934. If you visited the property, I'm sure you discovered two things. One, it's pretty hard to find without a GPS. And number two, it's a really unique property. It's tucked in on Taylor's Pond. You really wouldn't know it was there unless you go looking for it. So, it's pretty special in that regard. I think it's part of the reason Paul, uh, ended up buying it when he did. The, um, about a year or so ago, Paul looked into renovation options because both of the buildings are in, um, rough shape, uh, in need of a lot of work. And he would like to create some additional living area. They're both pretty small. So, uh, in terms of, uh, family and friends, he would like a little bit more space when he has guests. Uh, initially, he looked at renovation and it was determined that wasn't a real feasible option. In particular, with the structure located closest to Taylor's Pond that you see there, that's in the floodplain. So, any significant, um, work to that structure would require lifting it up, putting on a new foundation and trying to build from there, which wasn't a great option in terms of the condition of the home. So, Paul then pivoted toward, um, the demo rebuild, which is the proposal before you today. And, um, it's a challenging site from a conservation perspective, as I'm sure you can see from the, um, site plan. And so, in terms of creating additional living area, going horizontal isn't a real option, uh, with all the conservation setbacks that you see there with coastal bank, floodplain, and the rest. So, in working with Greg, Paul's thought process was to essentially keep the existing footprint as much as he could, um, and build up to create the additional living area, which is on the plans that, uh, have been presented, filed and are being presented today for you. In addition, uh, some of the focus was on creating some expanded decks that you see to try to take advantage of the views of Taylor's Pond, uh, with some outdoor living space that, uh, Paul thinks will add a real benefit to the property. Despite all the lines and everything on the plan, we're really not changing a whole lot. Uh, the footprint, overall building footprint, excuse me, overall building coverage is only increasing by a combined 267 square feet, uh, on the site, on the site, which you see here, it's a small bump out on the, uh, structure closest to Taylor's Pond and then the, um, about a 200-foot increase on the, uh, on the back structure in terms of footprint. The, um, gross floor, gross floor area numbers are increasing. Not, I wouldn't say significantly, but they are increasing because we are adding a second level with additional living area. The buildings are higher. Part of that, at least for the, the structure located closest to, um, the pond is because we have to pull it up out of the floodplain. So, it has to be at elevation, starting at elevation 13. Um, but both structures, even with that compliance requirement, are still well below the 30-foot height limitation. So, we think it's a, um, a reasonable, uh, proposal that he's put forth. I think part of what Paul was hoping is he likes the two structures, the two smaller structures with a little bit additional living area. That's provided by this plan. He wasn't looking to demolish both and build one big structure in the middle. That's not really what he sees as, as really the beauty for this property and how he wants to use it. So, that's the reason he's keeping the footprints and sort of keeping the design that you see today. Going on to the criteria, number one, adequacy of the site in terms of size. Uh, we believe the size, the size is more than adequate for the proposal. As I mentioned, it's a very small increase in the, uh, footprint number. As proposed, will be at 8.1%, which is about 1,000 square feet less than would be allowed under the zoning bylaw. The property itself, as I should have mentioned this, is actually over two acres. It's quite large. It's not even the whole piece that you see on, on David's plan. The, um, the buildable upland's only 21,600 square feet. So, the 8% is based on the 21,600 square feet. If you actually use the 94,000 square feet in terms of the overall size of the lot, our building coverage goes all the way down to 1.8%. So, uh, as seen, the, the, the change is really insignificant, I would say. Uh, number two, compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. If you drove around, uh, Beach Plum, Uncle Dean's area, you see it was a real mixture of sizes and styles. Um, while they are slightly expanded, I think these structures are still modest in size and the overall gross, gross floor area for the two structures is in line with, um, neighboring properties. I did provide a, um, gross floor area analysis. It's a little bit of a challenge in this case, I found, because it's sort of hard to determine what the neighborhood is. But taking properties on Beach Plum, taking properties on Uncle Dean's, and also taking properties on Juniper Lane West, which is to the left of the property that you see in front of you here, I think even combined, our numbers are, are directly in the middle with, with neighboring properties. So, I think we're certainly compatible in terms of size. Extent of proposed increase in non-conforming nature of the structural use. Again, the structures are becoming slightly larger, uh, and they're located in the conservancy district. So, I suppose there is a slight increase in non-conforming nature. But other than that, we comply with all dimensional setbacks, coverage requirement and height requirement. Uh, suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or the natural environment. I'd suggest the site is suitable for the demolition rebuild. Uh, there'll be no negative impact on neighboring properties or the environment caused by the proposal today. The Conservation Commission, um, received this project quite favorably, I would say, at their meeting. Paul is undertaking, um, a ton of mitigation work, uh, in conjunction with this project, more than he's required to under the, uh, conservation regs. But I think that's really important to him, including, uh, they're doing a lot of mitigation on the, I believe it's the little cranberry bog that you see to the right of the house. So, they're engaging in some work there. So, it's gonna be a real benefit at the end of the day from a conservation perspective. Impact of scale, setting and mass on neighborhood visual character. I don't think there'll be any negative impact on neighborhood visual character. While the houses will be higher than what's there now, the topography does, um, dip significantly from the back of the lot to the front of the lot, and the front of the lot being Taylor's Pond. So, any properties behind, I don't think their views are really impacted by the additional height. As seen from Taylor's Pond, I don't think it's gonna have a negative impact. I drove around the other side today, Taylor's Pond Road. There's a little, um, landing there. You can look directly across at Paul's property. And from there, it's really gonna fit right in. And when you look across, there's much bigger homes that sort of dot that, uh, pond. So, I don't think it's gonna have any negative impact on the view from the pond. It's a single-family dwelling in a residential neighborhood and therefore compatible. Uh, number seven, method of sewage disposal source of water and drainage. Adequate water, adequate drainage, and is serviced by Title V septic system. There'll be no negative impact on traffic flow and safety, no issues with noise and litter. Uh, property has adequate utilities. 12, we normally skip, but this one is in the floodplain. At least the, the structure located closest to Taylor's Pond, there is a very small lateral expansion of the dwelling. But I'd suggest it's so minor in scale, it'll have no negative impact on the impervious area. While there is a deck being added, again, that's off the ground. So, that shouldn't have any impact on the impervious area. So, just to, uh, conclude, I think, um, it's a great project, really. I think it's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, I will read the correspondence. We have a letter from Judith Giorgio from May 20, 2024, who's our, she's our health agent. She reports that she reviewed the plan to demolish the existing dwellings and rebuild the two new dwellings. The site plan and floor plans submitted indicates that there is 21,000 square feet of upland at this property. The existing dwellings have two bedrooms. In accordance with the Board of Health Nitrogen Loading Regulation, they can add a third bedroom, approved by the Board of Health, with an IA septic system. Then we have a note from the Conservation Commission from May 6, 2024, stating that the applicant has submitted a notice of intent and was heard by the Commission on March 13, continued to June 5, 2024. The project will be revised to meet the performance standards under the Wetlands Protection Act. Then we have a note from Christina Basset, the Town of Chatham Historical Commission Staff Liaison. In November of 2023, the board found that 108 Beach Plum Road is not historically significant and did not impose a demolition delay. That concludes the correspondence. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that we should speak against or has a specific question? Question, absolutely. Sir, if you could just walk up to the mic?
Sure.
Yes, same place as the presenter. Take your time. Watch your step.
Hi, my name is Paul Ryan. I'm here with Elaine Ryan, the owner of 65 Juniper Lane West. It's in a butter on the upland side of the property. And what we want to know is, is the applicant going to do any improvements to the upland 21,000 square feet?
Okay, we'll see if we can have that answered.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand the question.
Any improvements, any improvements on the uplands 21,000 square feet of the property?
Yes.
Do you want to elaborate on that, counsel, a little bit?
Well, I mean, the part of the upland area is where we're doing, where the houses are located. So we're doing work within that area.
So...
I think is what I'm answering his question. I'm not really sure.
Yeah, I mean, you're not building any structures there, are you, on the upland side?
What do you refer to as the upland? I guess if you look at the plan, that might help me.
Well, the upland is...
You can only talk at the, sir, sir, excuse me. You can only talk when you're at the microphone? However, there is an indicator you can use to explain the area in question?
I guess the upland is this portion right here. Is that correct?
Yes, that's just going to be the new septic system.
Okay, so there's going to be a new septic system there?
Yep.
And the height of this particular building is going to be 34 feet or 30 feet?
Let me get that exact number for you. Give me a second. The height of, the height of the back structure is going to be, where is that? Oh, I'm sorry, 45.4 feet, as calculated from average grade.
So that's 45...
Yeah, so it's, the building itself is 27 feet, but as you calculate it based on average grade, the ridge height is 45.4. It's about eight feet higher than what's there now.
Okay, so, because, do you know what the upland area is as compared to, the height of the upland area is compared to the height, you know, the difference between the upland and the existing ridge height of the building structure now?
I just want to make sure. When you say upland, you're talking about the area closest to your property?
Yeah, the area in...
David, do you want to address the elevation change?
In other words, this property that's right here now has a height from, I guess, the roadway or something. And then the upland area, in other words, I'm trying to see what's the difference would be in the upland area.
Right, I understand. So David can answer that, isn't he? I do.
We know you, Dave Clark, but if you could just say your name to identify yourself.
Just want you to identify yourself, David.
Yep. David Clark, Clark Engineering, for the record. So the back northwest corner of the property is around elevation 36. And the proposed ridge is elevation 45.4, so...
So it would be nine feet above the upland property as it stands now?
It'd be nine feet above the ground level at the northwest corner.
Did you have a certain concern, sir, that...
Well, a sight view for Taylor's Pond.
From your house?
From the abutting corner, yeah. That area, that upland area is basically a field now. So you have an open access to see somewhat of Taylor's Pond. So it was just a question of the height to see if it comes up another, it looks like it's going to come up another nine feet or something above that level. And it looks like it's going to come up on the, looks like it's going to come up on the, on this side. In other words, this is the upland area. It looks like it's going to come up on this side of the upland. In other words, the, I don't know which direction that is, but on the roadway side rather than on the abutting side.
Do you see the black lines on that plan?
Right here?
No, no, I'm sorry. If I could borrow the point there, that might help. So this is the footprint of the proposed structure right here. That's the existing. So it's not going any further closer to, in that direction. It's going higher, essentially in the same area where it is now. And then they're doing the deck over here, which is closer to the driveway side.
If it helps at all, they could have built a much larger structure if they had wanted to.
I understand that. They were entitled to 1,000 more square feet or something like that, yeah. Between the two buildings, basically, right?
Right, right.
Or they could have demolished the two buildings and built one structure.
That's right.
You know, yeah. But we were just concerned about the upland section.
Do you have any other questions, or does your significant other? If she does, she can walk up and, whatever time you need.
Well, I think that's it.
I think she might have a question.
Oh, okay, this is Elaine.
You think you know someone?
I'm Elaine Ryan, and I'm at 65 Juniper Lane. And I'm in that corner. The house has been there since the 40s. And basically, I'm concerned about the, even the 10-foot additional height, because our view is already ruined on Juniper Lane by someone else. So I'm a little concerned with, see, if you could bring that down, who's doing that?
Yeah.
If you, yeah, you see the corner there, and the property's that way, and it looks over to Juniper Lane that way, or to the pond that way. So it would be 10-foot above the existing, that's what you're saying, right?
Right, the, the height's going out 10 feet.
Yeah. And where is the elevation for that, the house? Like, what does it look like?
You mean the design?
The design.
It's up here. So it's the one on the left.
And just so you know, ma'am, if you ever want to see the design, it's on the website. But you, take your time to look at it, sure.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm concerned, and I'm also here for the neighbor that also abuts to the property, Mary Parsons. So we're both concerned with our view being obstructed, because it's, it's been there for a long time. So, all right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. So this is, okay. Do you want to rebut any of that, counsel?
Just briefly, I think it is going higher. I think Paul's been very cognizant of trying to be reasonable and not overreach with folks behind as well in terms of impacting views. I think it'll be a change. I think there still will be a view, and there's still some pretty significant corridors on either side of the home. So I think there still will be views and vistas to Taylor's Pond for the properties behind.
Sure, okay. So at this point, questions from the board. Dave Veech?
So, well, I guess I'm just trying to clarify in my mind some of this. 65 Juniper Lane West, I can see where that is. I, when I was out there, I really kind of looked at neighboring properties and tried to make an assessment of what the impact might be on views. And I didn't find, I thought it was pretty well done, certainly based on 91 Juniper Lane, that shouldn't affect that much at all. I don't know about 65. I didn't put that into a question. So, but I do say, I do want to just clarify so that we're all clear on this part. I mean, I agree that, you know, looking at the grading and the ridge, new ridge being about nine feet above the grade, up the upper corner of the property. But I do want to just, in comparison, Dave Clark showing the existing ridge elevation for that cottage at 31.6, and then the proposed ridge elevation is 45.4. So we're really talking about, you know, almost 14 feet higher than the existing ridge of the cottage.
I might have had a number wrong in my, I do see that on the plan.
I don't, I mean, I actually don't think it's going to be objectionable, but I just want to clarify that for everyone.
Yeah, no, thank you, David.
Okay. I have no other questions I can think of right now. Thanks.
Steve Nixon, questions?
No, thank you.
No questions? Ginny, questions?
Well, I had that question about the height, too. So on this cover page, that, you know, the ad page, it says the proposed building height dwelling is 25 feet, 3 and 3/4 inches. But now we're hearing it's 40. And I thought Dave Clark said it's nine feet above the grade, not nine feet. What would be helpful for me is how much taller is it than the existing house? Houses. Is it 14 feet taller than the existing house or nine feet taller?
It's 14 feet taller than the existing house. It's nine feet, David was talking about the grade at the back of the property.
Okay.
And so the house, the ridge will be nine feet taller than the grade at the back left of the property, the northwest.
So then where are these numbers on the site plan and on the application? What is 27 feet, 4 inches, proposed building height of the cottage, 25 feet, 3 and 3/4 inches, proposed building height of the dwelling? Where are they factoring into this?
I'm sorry, where are you pulling those numbers from?
From the site plan and from the cover page, the, you know, the...
Well, I don't prepare the cover page. I'm not sure where that number is.
Okay, well, they're also on the site plan.
No, I understand the site plan numbers.
I think Sarah might be able to shed some light.
So Ginny, what you're looking at, there's elevation 45.4, which is the proposed ridge elevation of the cottage. That's the one that is measured from average grade, which equals 27 feet, 4 inches of height.
Of the building, the proposed cottage, 27 feet?
Yes, from average grade. Now, the other dwelling, the one that's in the flood zone, has to be measured from lowest adjacent grade, because that's how dwellings are measured in the flood zone. So you take whatever the lowest adjacent grade is, add your building height to that, and the maximum would be, the ridge elevation for that is 36.3.
Right.
With the lowest adjacent grade of 11. So that equals 25 feet, 3 and 3/4 inches tall.
Right, 25 feet tall is the new building, the new dwelling?
The new one that's closest to the water, because there's two dwellings.
Right, the dwelling. The cottage is the one I'm calling in the back.
Yes.
Okay, but it's 27 feet tall and 25 feet tall?
Correct.
36 and 45 feet tall?
36 and 45 are elevation numbers.
Yeah, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that, because I don't know if, so is that really then it's nine feet tall than the current cottage and dwelling?
So, well, it's two different numbers.
One is nine, one is 14.
Let me just make sure I'm giving it, 10, I guess, for the main, the structure closest to Taylor's Pond, David? Roughly 10 feet increase for the structure closest to Taylor Pond, and 14 feet ridge height for the structure behind.
Okay.
And then the actual height of the building, as Sarah mentioned, is 25 and 27, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. One more quick question, Jamie. On your gross floor area comparison, which is very helpful, all of the other properties you've listed in '24, '20, '19, '13, are those also upland numbers, or are they total lot numbers?
Those are total lot numbers. The assessor does not break it down for us.
Right, okay, that's what I thought. And so your number at 94,000 is much larger. So visually, there's a lot of property.
It's over 2 acres visually.
I just wanted, that's what I assumed, because I drove there, we drove there, and didn't look like all the other properties were that large. So I just wanted to confirm that. Yep, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Steve, questions?
Well, I'm glad to see that you're trying your best to keep the footprint as close as possible, as it was. I know it's difficult. It's probably, I think you explained it would probably be easier to build a new house than it would be to try to raise the old one. I understand that. And I appreciate also, it kind of looks like from the site plan that you're trying to maintain as much of the vegetation that's already there as possible, at least the major vegetation, getting rid of some of the overgrown stuff. I can understand that. In one of these letters here, it said, I guess from the, from the Conservation Commission, that they have a meeting coming up on June 5 for a revised plan. What exactly, what are the revisions that they're looking for?
David, do you want to?
Sure. So on the cottage that's up the hill, we have the little driveway turnaround area, and there was a tree that we missed on the site plan that the conservation noticed, and they asked us to redesign that, that area, to move it away from that tree so we could keep, they could keep the tree.
That's it?
I think that was it.
Yeah, it was pretty minor.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Lee, questions?
Just a quick question. The cottage up the hill has a garage?
Yes.
But the main dwelling does not?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Paul?
I guess I have no questions.
Nope, okay. I was just wondering, counsel, what street did you go down to be able to see this? Do you know the name of the street you went down?
To see it from the pond?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you go Cocko Cove, and you take a right on Taylor's Pond Road. And then there's a, there's a turnoff right there, a little landing. It looks, it looks directly across off of Taylor's Pond Road.
That's helpful. Oh, thank you. Okay, Paul?
I will move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veech seconds and votes yes.
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 Paul votes yes.
As do I. Okay, deliberations. Paul?
Well, it looks like a good project to me. It's a, it's an isolated area. I kayak in Taylor's Pond fairly frequently. You'll see it from there, but I think it'll be an attractive design to look at. And Taylor's Pond is pretty well protected from storm surge and so forth by the marsh that goes out from Forest Beach. So I think it should be satisfactory from that location. Those would be my thoughts.
Dave Nixon, deliberations?
Well, it's rare that I go to a property and I say, wow. I mean, it doesn't happen very often with me. But when I walked in there and drove in, I said, isn't this fantastic? And then I looked at what your client plans to do, and I said, this is really keeping it and modernizing it, and good for them. So I was very impressed by the property and also what your client's going to do.
Dave Veech, deliberations?
Yeah, I have to echo what Dave just said. I really want to compliment the design, the choices. This is a, I wish more projects came to us that fit as well as this and looked as good as this.
They wouldn't need us if they...
That's true. I mean, it's, it's a, you know, it basically references beach cottages and things. It's a really nice design, and it fits that property. And I, and, again, I looked, and I looked at the neighboring houses that I could see, and I felt that, well, certainly on the lower house, the main house, the part that they're going to put up a little bit higher is not going to negatively impact anyone's view, from what I could see down there. The cottage being that 14 feet higher than the existing ridge, and nine feet higher than the grade up in the corner, may have, it probably will be able to be seen from number 65. But I don't think that it's going to, I would, I don't think it's going to strongly negatively affect... affect the view. I can't say that because I don't live up there. But given that we, you know, the courts have told us that we are not to take into account individual property owners' views, but neighborhood views and vistas, and that they are below the maximum ridge height, I don't feel that we, I can, I could not find this to be substantially more detrimental for those very reasons, even though there may be some impact. I am hopeful, and I think these are good-looking buildings. I don't think, when it's all said and done, that the neighbors are going to be unhappy. And it meets all of our criteria. I will support it.
Ginny, deliberations?
So I like it very much, too. I appreciate that you, on the dwelling, you have various roof heights. It isn't just a massive structure that's right there on the water. I think that was very, you showed restraint, and I think it's very attractive, talking about the dwelling. And I agree with the comments from my colleagues. The cottage is taller, it's bigger, but it's very, very small right now. And I think it's a beautiful property. You've certainly got the large lot. You've taken, it's evident you've taken a lot of care to provide what is, the footprint's hardly changing at all in the dwelling, a little bigger in the cottage, but it's very well-done proposal. I would support it.
And Steve, if you were voting?
Well, I think it's a nice project in that, you know, you're trying to be, you know, within all the setbacks, you're trying, you're best to not change the environment too much. About the same sizes as they were, maybe a little taller, but you're not maxing anything out, which is good these days. So I think it's a nice project. I would vote to support it.
And Lee?
I agree with my colleagues. It's a beautiful spot. I really, it's fairly modest, and I really like the fact that the owner and the architect kind of are honoring the historic, the way it was, you know, with the exception of the second floor. So if I were voting, I would support it as well.
And I support it as well, and I just want to say that I'm glad that the neighbors came.
Thank you for the opportunity to hear us.
Of course. And I just want to say that a lot of our applications are detrimental to the neighborhood. They are. But our standard is substantially detrimental. And when, and as you can tell, we're used to, we're used to having applications that come that want to use every bit and go as tall as they can. You've heard probably a lot more than I have about what people are trying to necessarily, trying to build in Chatham. And I applaud this applicant for caring about the environment and for not trying to overdo. So I will vote in favor as well. Paul?
Yes, I would say welcome to Chatham, to Paul Deadweiler. I knew your brother John and Nancy in Hopkinton. I'll move to approve the application as submitted. In terms of conditions, I think we should use our standard condition with respect to locating construction vehicles and so forth on site. And I guess the question would be, do we need to restrict access to construction and so forth in the summertime?
What do you think, Council?
We discussed that. Paul's fine with that condition. He understands the, you know, the neighbors are not going to be too happy. There's a lot of, you know, a lot of people around the summertime. So it's going to be challenging to get vehicles in and out anyway at that time of year, so he's happy with the general restriction or the usual restriction on time.
Okay.
All right. Well, then on that basis, I'll move to approve the application on the condition that all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, no work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
David, seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're going to take up 55 Stillwater Road next, 24-046, when Sarah's ready.
Application number 24-046, Kathleen Kilkeny, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 55 Stillwater Road, also shown on the town of Chatham's Assessor's map, 9J, Block 34, Lot SW13. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 23.2 feet from the Westerlia Butter where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed addition will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,214 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 1,887 square feet, or 2,850 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 22,228 square feet, or 60,000 square feet is required in the R60 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Riley, welcome back.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Bill Riley, on behalf of Kathleen Kilkeny. Unfortunately, Kathleen can't be here because she's with her husband having back surgery today, and that's part of the project here, is that they're modifying the house so they can age in place, the way many of us like to do. The building, the modifications were designed by Karen Kempton, who's here today, and asked her to come up. Wrong one, never mind. She's here for one of these things today. Anyway, so basically what they want to do is they're going to put an addition on the right-hand side that has a drive-on garage and a family room above, and that'll be one-story living once you get up there. The, if you've been to the site, I was surprised at the topography. I'm so used to Chatham not having, being more flat than anything else. I was really surprised at the topography and the tree growth. So you really can't see, it's difficult to see the different houses from one another, which I thought was kind of surprising. So, but I think that works to the benefit of the applicant here, because aside from looking directly at the house from the street up the driveway, I don't think this addition is visible to the neighbors in any way. Again, because of the topography and the tree growth. The, so if you look at the floor plan, basically what they're adding is a two-car garage and then a family room over there. And so the, once the project is complete, they're going to have a family room, a kitchen, and a bedroom all on one floor. So there'll be a basic one-floor living, which is what their goal is in this instance. The design, could you put the color rendering up again, Sarah? So as you see from the design, it's very much in keeping with the existing structure. Most of the homes in the neighborhood are also very traditional, as this one is. And so I think the design is very much in keeping with the neighborhood. So I think, and I'll just run through the criteria. Adequacy to the size of the site in terms of the proposed use. The coverage is increasing, but even the increased coverage is only 8.5%, where 15% would be allowed. So the, it's a very modest addition. Compatibility to the size of the proposed structure. We have a third sheet where we've compared the gross floor areas as best we can calculate So I think the, so we're a little bit bigger because of the two-car garage, but other than that, visually, I think the home is very much compatible in terms of size of the proposed structure with all the neighboring properties. There's cases like this where I think the gross floor area is really misleading, because if you drive down the road and you look at this house, even this house as proposed, you wouldn't think, oh, this is the biggest house in the neighborhood. But because of the requirement for showing the gross floor area, that number makes it look like it's the largest home in the neighborhood. So, in any event, the, so the extended proposed increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure, the, this is in our 40s zone now. Clearly, it was in our 20s zone when it was developed. The, so what we're doing is we're increasing the living area on a non-conforming lot, and so that's considered an increase in the non-conforming nature. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or on the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff. As you know from your visit, there are no wetlands in close proximity to the property. I suppose theoretically, there could be some runoff down the driveway, which already exists. I think the contractor will take the steps necessary to prevent any excess stormwater running off onto the, onto the street. Impact of scale, siding, and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. Again, you know, the modest size of the addition and the traditional design, I think that, I think that it constitutes an improvement on this site, and certainly, given its modest size, it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it fits in very nicely.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there anybody here or in Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please make it known. Seeing none, I will read the correspondence. Judith Giorgio, our health agent, writes on May 20th, 2024, I reviewed the plan to add an attached garage with a bonus family room above to this property. The property was approved and septic was installed for the existing three-bedroom property. The bonus room with a six-foot cased opening into the kitchen area is acceptable and does not add additional flow. I have no concerns. That concludes the correspondence for that application. Is there anybody here or in Microsoft Teams that has a question or wishes to speak against this application? Seeing none. Questions from the board? Ginny?
I agree with you, Mr. Riley. When you were talking about the gross floor area, looks like it's not as much as it is, and I think that's because there's some wrong numbers on this page. But I don't, it's, I'm looking at your page, and it's way under what it's showing on the cover page. But can you just confirm, then, that it's not 4,756 square feet of, I'm talking about the proposed gross floor area, which is what you have here, too, in your packet? And you have it as 3,372, which is a lot less. I just wanted to reconcile that.
The, I have to admit that I didn't do the math today.
Okay. Sarah, is that right? Do you know?
I believe the existing is 3,000. I'm just looking, typically, it is listed on the plan.
Well, it's, and this is a different plan, so I stumbled around with the plan myself.
Okay, you have the existing storage utility room at 814 square feet, the existing garage at 274 square feet. The proposed garage is 593 square feet. If you look at page, page two of the plan set, it has existing gross floor area of 2914.5, and they're doing proposed addition gross floor area, 1850.
So the 4,700 number is correct?
It's combining the two, yes.
Yeah, okay. That's all I had.
Questions? Steve?
I guess just for the record, what becomes of the existing garage?
I think it's going to remain available for either boat storage or car storage.
Okay. It's not being converted to a room or something?
No. No, this is a two-person family.
Okay.
I think the real goal is to have one-floor living for them.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Lee, questions?
No questions.
Paul?
I have no questions.
Dave Nixon?
Well, Mr. Riley, as you know, whenever I see a bonus room, I smell a rat. So if I were your client, I would want that to be my master bedroom. But that's not how it's laid out.
Well, the benefit of that, though, David, is that it'd be really close to the kitchen.
Okay.
They should have put, they should have put family room, and then there wouldn't be any questions, but...
So I presume you'd accept a condition in regards to the bonus room, that it not be used as a bedroom?
Of course.
Sir, would you like to?
Let me make this suggestion. It can't be used as an additional bedroom.
Well, that, yeah, you'd have to wipe out one or the other.
Right. And that, that's governed by Board of Health regulations.
Right, right. But, you know, things happen. So, yeah, I know, I know. Okay, I don't know, Paul, how we word that, but I'll be looking for a little bit of help.
Sir, did you wish to say something?
Excuse me, my name, Don Poyn, I'm from Eastwood Companies. I was just going to say that the intent of the room over the garage is to be kind of a multipurpose space. Kathleen is an attorney in town, and she intends, and right now, she's using one of the first-floor bedrooms as an office. She's going to be relocating that space into this area, also some TV space for the family. And then they're going to be moving downstairs to the existing space that she's using as an office as their first-floor bedroom. That's what's going to happen.
Thank you, Don.
Okay. Dave?
I have no questions.
No questions? I don't have any questions either. Did I miss anybody? Paul, questions?
I'll, no, I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David, seconds and votes yes.
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 All vote yes.
As do I. So deliberations. Dave Nixon?
Well, I think we just did. And so I would vote in favor of it, with the understanding and whatever the condition we come up with about that bonus room.
Okay. Dave Nixon, Veach?
I think it's a nice project. It meets all of our criteria. I'm not as concerned about the nomenclature of the, but I'll go along with whatever we decide. Anyway, it's, I think it's an improvement, not substantially more detrimental in the neighborhood. I'll support it.
Very good. Ginny?
Yeah, I think it's, it's actually, that's why I was questioning the numbers, because it sounds so, it looked, it sounded and looked so massive, but it isn't. It's a very attractive design, even though the garage, again... It's a very attractive design, even though the garage, again, looking at the numbers, is over 29 feet. It's set down into the grade. It's very attractive. So I would support it.
Steve?
I think I feel the same way. It doesn't appear to affect the neighbors adversely in any way. And if it's going to make their life a little bit easier, like it sounds like, I'd be all for it.
Lee?
I agree. I think it's a nice addition. It will make their life a little easier, and having another garage is always helpful.
And Paul?
Yeah, clearly, it fits into the neighborhood. And I'm still amazed that they could get that boat on the trailer up there to the right-hand side way up... I mean, I can't imagine getting up there anyhow.
And I would support it as well. And I think the issue of that bonus room, they already took pains to make a six-foot cased opening. A lot of times, we don't see that, and Judith Giorgio has to rustle with them to do that. But they've already done that here, and we can't be peeking in the window to see if they sleep in there. So I think I'm okay with it as it is. I don't know if Jay wants to get arrested at Peepi Tom. I don't think so.
Why not?
Anyway, so Paul?
Well, I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I guess the question is conditions in terms of construction. What are your thoughts, Bill?
Given the nature of the neighborhood, I don't think you need any of the summertime restrictions.
Does anybody support?
The houses are sufficiently separated. You know, there's room on the property for the construction vehicles. And it's a pretty small addition, so I just don't see it as a major disruption in the neighborhood.
What do you think, Dave Veach?
I agree. I mean, there's only a few neighbors around, and, you know, it's a dead-end road more... I think I'd be okay with just the timing of construction stuff, but not the not prohibiting exterior.
Yeah, and that would be acceptable. No work before 8:00, no work after 5:00, and no work on weekends. That's perfectly acceptable.
What do you think, Dave Nixon?
That's okay.
And Ginny?
I agree.
Steve? And Lee? Okay? All right, Paul, continue.
All right. I'll move to approve on the condition that all construction activity and vehicles will be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30 and Labor Day?
Yes, please.
No exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends and construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only. I don't think I see a need for restriction on the record in terms of sleeping in the bonus room, given that that's not allowed as it is.
But I... My understanding was we were not going to put the exterior construction prohibition on.
The summer?
The summer.
That was mine as well.
Do the timing, but not...
Just the timing, not the...
I thought he said no construction before 8:00, no construction after 5:00, but construction during the summer is allowed.
Okay. Well, let's revise it to that extent then.
Yes.
And with that change, I'll move to approve it.
And I will second and vote yes.
Dave Nixon? You okay with that?
Well, I don't have quite the faith, some of the others do, about what might happen to the bonus room, but I vote yes.
Good. And Ginny?
I vote yes.
And Paul?
All vote yes.
All right. As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Let's see what time it is. Oh, 4:30. All right. So we are going to go on to 53 Marshview Road when Sarah's ready.
Application number 24-047, Avaro James Mastobrano and Laura Elizabeth Mastobrano. Karen William Riley Esquire, P.O., Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 53 Marshview Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 8C Block 26, Lot S38. The applicant proposes to enlarge, proposes to change, alter, or expand a conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling and proposed dwelling will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration. And under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 955 square feet, 7.5%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,788 square feet, 14%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains 12,775 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5 via the protective bylaw.
Mr. Riley, Ms. Kempton, welcome.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of the Mastobrano family. Karen is the architect, and I'd like to have her explain the design criteria that the family gave her and how she accomplished it.
Thank you. Karen Kempton, architect for Jim and Laura Mastobrano. I think Jim is online here. Sarah, if you could pull up the existing plan of the house? So the existing single-story home was built in 1963 and has been a summer cottage for Jim and Laura for over 20 years. They would now like to make this a year-round home as they are moving to Chatham full-time. The existing house is 933 square feet with no attic space and no basement. The bedrooms are quite small, so if you can see that it's 22 feet on the left-hand side, take out two feet for the closet. Each of those bedrooms is about 10 by 10, pretty small. And the master is 12 by 10. There is a... So the proposed house will have all bedrooms on the second floor to give the first floor open public space. There is an increase of 272 square feet of first-floor living, but still it's a modest 1,272 square feet on the first floor.
Sarah, the first-floor plan? Thank you.
And if you look forward, the gross floor area then, as you can see, does increase because they are adding a single-car garage, and they are adding a full basement. But we, there are no or very few other garages in this neighborhood, but where they will be here full-time, it was important for them to have a garage. Jim and Laura also requested to keep the existing septic system, which requires a 20-foot setback to the house. So we have looked to minimize any extension into the 100-foot setback from the top of Coastal Bank. There is a view on the west side of the house, so they wanted to maintain this area as their outdoor living space. Facing Marshview Road, the house is 14 feet longer... If we can pull up the site plan. It's 14 feet longer than the existing house, and that is by the addition of this one-car garage. The main portion of the house is 28 feet wide with two doghouse dormers connected with a recessed shed roof. So if you bring up the front elevation, you can see the main part where the front door is, is only 28 feet, pretty much the same size as would be a halfcape. The proposed height is 25 feet above top of foundation, which is 3 feet 6 inches lower than the allowed height. When I did the plans, I wrote 25 plus or minus, which got translated into 25 feet from top of foundation. So it's up to you, but if I could ask for four more inches just for construction tolerance, but if that's an issue, that's fine. I'll work with the 25. The additional structures to the left and to the right have lower ridge heights and have smaller shed dormers that sit in two feet from the ends of the roof line. The right side has a six-foot-deep covered porch, which recesses the wall of the house an additional seven feet away from the front cornerboard. So by these additive structures, the house is minimized in scale. The ridge height will be eight feet higher than the existing due to the addition of the second floor. However, the second floor appearance is minimized by the design of these dormers. The house will be 39.6 feet back from the front property line, where 25 feet is required. The house will be sighted on the lot similarly to the existing house, but will not, but will have the first floor one foot lower than the existing house. The rear of the house is an additional 6 feet 9 inches away from the rear setback. We are also conforming to the Bucks Creek Road setback as the proposed house is an additional 16 feet away from the 25-foot road setback. Although we are closer on the east side, the addition of a garage, by the addition of the garage, we see this as the quiet side of the house, and all outdoor activity will be taking place on the west side of the house. The basement is fully below grade, and although it does add to the gross floor area, is an important space, as the existing house only has crawl space. And we feel it does not add to the visual massing of the house at all, as it is all below grade. There's no walkout. There is no areaway proposed. So that we hope you agree that the traditional cape with dormers and additive structures replacing the existing house in a similar location is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, but an attractive addition to the streetscape. That's my presentation.
Thank you. If you have any questions for Karen?
We'll get to that.
Okay. Let me run through the criteria. And stop me at whatever number you want. The adequacy of the size of the site in terms of the size of the proposed use. As Karen indicated, this is not a situation where Jim and Laura are trying to maximize the lot. The proposed coverage is 14%, where 15% would be allowed. The compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with the neighboring properties, there's obviously a very significant increase in the gross floor area because the existing house has no attic and no basement. And so, or a garage, either for that matter. So we're adding a garage, we're adding a basement. And I think those numbers tend to distort the impact that the property actually has on the neighborhood. So we believe that although the gross floor area is significantly larger, that the, you know, the visual impact of the property, as Karen indicated, basically, it's 28 by 28 with two wings of modest size and height. So we believe that the proposed structure is compatible with the neighborhood. Extended proposed increase in the non-conforming nature. Jim and Laura have made sure that the proposed structure meets all the current setbacks in the bylaw, both sideline setbacks, street setback, and rear yard setbacks. So the only increase in non-conforming nature is the increase in the living area, which, as you know, is constitutes an increase in the non-conforming nature. Suitability of the site, including, you know, but not limited to, impact on neighboring properties, natural environment, slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff. The project is a little bit elevated from the street. And as you can see on the plan, the proponent is proposing what straw waddles, which are like tubular structures of straw that would prevent any stormwater runoff from carrying siltation or dirt out into the street or onto the wetland, which is located across the street. And this project was taken... Dave Clark took this project through conservation, and we have their approval. Impact of scale, siding, and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. So the properties along Marshview Road all tend to look out towards the marsh, not surprisingly. The property behind this property doesn't look towards the marsh, it looks to the west. So our building, even though we're increasing the height and the size of the building, is not having a negative impact on any views that that property has. So I think that the, when you take into consideration the very attractive design that Karen has put together for Jim and Laura, I think that, in our opinion anyway, even though the ridge is going up by eight feet, that this project is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. It's a single-family house, a single-family neighborhood. You know, they're using the existing septic system, no impact on traffic flow and safety, or noise in the litter. And utilities and public services are adequate. And that'd be our presentation. Madam Chair?
Thank you so much. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please indicate. Seeing none, I will read the correspondence. There are two. One is from our health agent, Judith Giorgio. On May 20, 2024, I have reviewed the plan to demolish the existing dwelling and rebuild a new dwelling. The planned dwelling will maintain the three-bedroom layout of the existing dwelling and use the same septic system. She has no concerns about the project. And then we have a note from Rob DeDuetz, and he lives at 58 Marshview Road. He states on, let's see. Trying to see when this was... May 6, 2024. I'm a neighbor of Jim and Laura and live directly across the street at 58 Marshview Road in Chatham. I was excited to hear about their plans to renovate their existing home and property after what was, I am sure, an exciting planning process. I have reviewed the plans designed by Karen Kempton and are pleased with how their new home will fit nicely into the character of the neighborhood. Karen has also designed several other properties in our neighborhood over the years, and those have been well-received as well. Given the trend of building much larger homes to replace older, more traditional cape-style homes, it was comforting to see that the plans for Jim and Laura's new home will be tactfully designed with a clear thought towards not overwhelming their property. I particularly liked the farmer's porch and the traditional cape-style exterior proposed for the project. I look forward to enjoying a summer beverage and some lengthy banter with both Jim and Laura at the completion party next summer. If you require anything, please let me know. He gives his phone number, which I will not recite. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against or has a question about this application? Make it known. Seeing none. Questions from the board? Ginny?
Just one question, Karen. Probably really minor. Just was curious. On the site plan, there's like in the northwest corner, there's a, there's a black dotted line just on... What is that?
That's showing, well, the heavy dash, the heavy solid line is the roof. The dash line is the wall of the porch.
Oh, so that's a roof overhang?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve? Questions?
I have no questions.
Lee?
No questions.
Paul?
No questions.
Dave Veach?
I have no questions.
Dave Nixon?
No questions.
I don't have any questions either. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
Good job.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. So deliberations. Let's see. Steve? Yeah. Sorry.
Well, I think this is a large house for that neighborhood. Most of the houses there are modest ranch-style houses. And I'm not sure that I would call this house a traditional cape. I'm not crazy about the columns in the front. And I have a feeling that this house might be setting a precedent for that neighborhood in that it's larger, two-story building. I guess, you know, there's nothing wrong with setting a precedent, I guess, but I I think this might be, again, borderline detrimental to the neighborhood just because of its size and mass compared to the rest of the ones that are there.
Substantially detrimental?
I don't know about substantially.
Okay.
But I think it is borderline.
Yep. So you'll hear from your other colleagues and see what you think. All right. Ginny, what do you think?
Yeah, I think it's a beautiful design, but I agree. It's... Yeah, I think it's a beautiful design, but I agree, it's, you know, the building coverage is dou- almost doubling. The northwest corner, before you were not in conservation at all, even though it's just a little bit, and I watched the hearing and they were fine with it, you know, it's, you're encroaching now on CCD. I completely appreciate the desire to expand. It's a cute house, but it's small. But 14 feet longer, six feet wider, the height is great, it's lower, so I am just trying to visualize it. But I feel like the combination of those things is perhaps, you know, an intensification. I'm struggling primarily with criteria two, which is the compatibility of the proposed structure in, within the neighboring properties. I agree with Steve that, not to say neighborhoods can't change, but the vast majority of the houses in that neighborhood are single-story, and they're pretty small. And it's a small, relatively small lot, under 13,000. So I am also thinking that it's detrimental to the neighborhood substantially.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Most of these homes were built in 1963, '64, '65. And the idea that somehow they're trapped in the '60s, you know, this is a, I really think you should reconsider your thought process there, but that's, you know.
Well, thank you for that. I agree. You shouldn't be doomed to the, but the other houses in the neighborhood are very well-maintained. I mean, it looks as though they are comfortable with what they've had. There isn't a lot of change yet. So I did say I was struggling, but I just share my thoughts.
All right. So Mr. Riley, if you could just wait till we go through the deliberations, I'll give you a chance to scold us all individually later. Lee?
I agree with my colleagues. It's an absolute beautiful design. I really love the house. I love how you've decreased the mass in a number of different ways. The one thing that it has going against it, however, is the lot's elevation. It really sits up there over the neighboring houses around it. So I think it's great, and I, but I'm still, I am struggling with criteria number two as well. So, my two cents.
Okay, thank you. Dave Veach, what do you think?
I agree the, it's a very nice design, nice-looking design, Karen. I'm not troubled by this one, really. I mean, this neighborhood, I mean, I guess I kind of tend to think of the neighborhood as the entire development. And within that development, there's been a number of changes to some of these, to some of the houses. I mean, you could, it's actually, I think I commented at a previous meeting at one point about, you drive around that neighborhood and literally see, the, you can read the change in what people expect from homes from the time they were built, the original, because a number of the originals still left there, up to the latest polemics and savory confection on the top of the hill somewhere. I mean, it's, it's really, there's a lot going on there, and I think that this house certainly doesn't stretch any further than what's been previously done in some of the other locations. Again, I think it's, they're meeting the criteria of the bylaw with respect to, with respect to height, respect to setbacks, respect to lot coverage, all of those things. They started out with a 900-square-foot house of one floor, you know, they, so I don't see the, to go from there to the, was it 1,700, 1,700 square feet of footprint is not a huge stretch. And it reads to me as a, as a basic, in terms of cape, it's, it's like a story and a half style. The presentation of it is basically a one-and-a-half-story type presentation. And I don't see it as being substantially more detrimental at all. I think it's an improvement to the neighborhood, and it meets our criteria. I don't think that the increase in size is out of, really out of scale for the neighborhood. And I'll support it.
All right, thank you. What do you think, Paul?
Well, I agree with Dave Veach. You drive through this neighborhood, and I think of the neighborhood as being that whole section from the main beach road all the way down to Bucks Creek, you will see every kind of house potential that could exist in town. They're all different kinds, very different designs. And I think it's difficult to, in this case, picture exactly where we're going to be because we're starting with such a small piece of property and small house. But I think the design is excellent, and I think that it will fit into the neighborhood in the sense that, like the rest of the houses there, they're all individual to themselves. I don't think there's any one consistent style of home, other than when they first started in the 1960s. So I don't think that overall I could say it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I would intend the vote in favor.
Dave Nixon, deliberations?
Well, I do think it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And let's just, you know, this, as we know, there's no definition of neighborhood. So what neighborhood is for me, I walk around and I look at everything I can see or can be seen from all the houses around, and every one of them was one-story. But more than that, this house is the highest point. You know, it, that lot really rises up. So when you put Karen's design at the top of this, this is going to be, to me, if we look at two and five of our criteria, this is going to be massive in relation to that neighborhood that I see. Secondly, I walked around back, and I wanted to see how this home would impact Bucks Creek. And there's a house very close, and from the site plan, you see how absolutely close it is to the proposed structure. And yes, there's a stargate fence there, but I could just, I could see over it by going up on their little deck out back, and I could see their outside living area. And I said, wow, with this home being built, that would destroy the privacy, and that, that fence is not going up. I mean, it's, it's up as far as you're going to get. So I just, I can't see that this is a positive to the neighborhood, and it is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. When you look at what it's going to be when it's finished, it's going to be the big, big house on the hill.
Okay. So I'm going to go back to Ginny, just so we can have a good head count. You want me to tell you what I think? Or I can go to Ginny?
You were going to give me an opportunity.
I was gonna, as soon as we're all done. And the owner has their hand raised as well. So why don't we go to the owner? We're gonna, we're gonna bend the rules. I don't think we have to vote for that, do we? No. So I'm going to go to the owner.
Sure.
Owner?
Yeah, hi. This is Jim Mascherano. I'm surprised by this comment on, you know, detrimental to the neighborhood. You know, first, there are many, there's probably well over a dozen or so, two-story homes in that neighborhood. On Marshview Road alone, on the road I live on is several, and they are of different So we really try to do something that our neighbors were fully aware of and fully wanted. In fact, I personally wrote letters to each and every other. Many of them contacted me in full support. I showed plans to them. The last gentleman just spoke and said that he went on our back deck on the existing structure, and if that, and there's going to be infringement on the property view of the people who are next to us. The people who are next to us right there are fully in support of this project. And our patio actually goes off to the side of the house, so we don't actually, we actually buffer them, buffer the noise going into their backyard. They were very pleased with that. You heard the letter from our neighbor who's visually most impacted by our project. He's very supportive of it, and he went through the details of the plan. There was one neighbor who doesn't have an email, and I had to write him a letter, and I had to go and knock on his door, and we talked about it at length, and he was, and I described the whole project, and he was also very, very pleased by the, by the design, by the, you know, the scope, the fact that it overlays on, you know, really the existing footprint. So we're not really changing it. We're actually pulling, pulling some of the old driveway out of the conservation buffer, and the bulk of the new driveway is outside of that. So we, you know, we've, I think, addressed our neighbors', all our neighbors' concerns, got a lot of positive feedback. So I don't, I don't know if this is substantially detrimental in, according to my neighbors. And I made sure that I surveyed them all and got their feedback, and that's why I think today you don't have anyone on the call speaking negatively, because they are very much informed, and they're very pleased by what's going on here. And I disagree, that this will look like a house on the hill. It's, it is going to be a little higher than the existing structure, but the grade is going to drop a foot, as Karen noted, and the, the neighborhood is very undulating. So that's just, that's just the way it goes. So I, I would disagree as the homeowner that this is a substantial detrimental at all. I'm getting the exact opposite from the people who live in that neighborhood, that it is not detrimental. It'll be a significant improvement, and they're very excited about the project.
Okay, sir. Just, just so you know, I think it's great that you worked with your neighbors, and I think we all think that's extremely important. It would be interesting if they even all came in or if they all wrote letters, but I don't think, just so you know, it wouldn't really probably change what the members think, because this is, the neighbors that are there now are a snapshot in time, and real estate is forever in a sense. So that's the way we look at that, and.
That's fair, fair enough.
Yeah. And also, what, the opinion of the neighbors isn't one of our criteria. It's just often interesting and important to get input. But we're looking at criteria, and I'm going to go ahead and say, I think the criteria that I don't see met here are one, two, and especially five, the impact of scale, sighting and mass on the neighborhood visual character. Because I agree that this is a beautiful house, and it's going to really stand out, but it's also a much bigger footprint, the way I look at it on the site plan, and it's going to be, even if it wasn't up higher, it's going to be like this large, gorgeous house in a, in a neighborhood of small ranches. That's the way I see it. So I agree with my colleague, well, some of my colleagues. And so I would not be voting in favor, and I can see that that's true. But I still want to go to Ginny Fenwick to see what she thinks, and then we'll let Mr. Riley opine.
So, so I mentioned my reservations about it, and that I was thinking it was detrimental, wasn't certain substantially more. Lee brought up a great point, and Mr. Nixon as well, that, and I was there, and they reminded me that it is a high point in that neighborhood, and I am afraid the size of it. It's beautiful, Karen. You did a nice job. But I think it's going to be looming on that particular spot.
Okay, Mr. Riley, do you want to say anything else?
Yeah, I do, because I think the, I think your concerns, particularly about the height of the property, are completely incorrect. I think that one reason why there's nobody here objecting is that those people, the people in the neighborhood, see this as something that's going to raise the value of all the houses around it. That's why they're in favor of it. They think it's going to improve the value of their properties. And to talk about this lot like it's the Eiger in Switzerland, the, well, it's four feet higher than the street. I mean, it's not like it's 10 feet higher, it's four feet higher than the street. I mean, so, but, well, all right, so if we cut two feet off the lot, is that something that now it's not going to loom over the property? I mean, really, I mean, you really think that four feet is looming? And the person who sent the letter in favor of it, that's the guy whose lot you can look into. So I think, I really think you should reconsider your thoughts. I understand, you know, you've all spoken your opinions and.
Well, we'll reconsider when we see a new site plan, after you continue. So do you wish to get a continuance, have a vote, or withdraw?
No, we'd request a continuance to the first available meeting.
That would be August 8.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
August 8.
Okay, Paul?
I will move to grant the requested continuance to August 8, 2024.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
You know, if I may comment, we hear this a lot, what Mr. Riley was just talking about, about, well, it's going to increase the values of the homes and all that. Our criteria is not, is this going to raise the value of the homes in the neighborhood? Is it going to decrease it? That's not anything we ever consider. It is just not. And we shouldn't, and we don't. So.
But in terms of, what is substantially more.
Nah, we're all done with you, Mr. Riley.
What's substantially more detrimental?
Mr. Riley, timeout. You vote yes on the continuance?
I do.
All right, good. Ginny?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
As do I. That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
So, so there's no further comment? I mean, I just, as the owner?
Well, you can talk to your attorney and all your staff, sir, but that would be Now, when Sarah's ready, we're going to go to Kitty's Lane, 54.
Application number 24-048, Todd Blythe and Ann Blythe, care of William at Freely Esquire, Peel Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 54 Kitty's Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham assessor's map, 3B, Block 57, Lot B75. The applicant seeks to enlarge standard change, a conforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot, be the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling and proposed dwelling will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and under the second except clause of Section 6 of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 842 square feet, 10.4%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,210 square feet, 14.9%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and it contains 8,134 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Riley, welcome back.
This property is at the bottom of the well. Can we just vote approval and go home?
Yeah, well, we like to, we like to follow the rules.
Okay. All right, so if you've been to Kitty's Lane, that's where Ann and Todd Blythe live. Ann is in the back row. Although Ann, I can tell you, there's nothing to be frightened of. They don't bite. The, and so they have a very modest home, as you can tell. And they want to be able to use it for year-round use. So that this design will enable them to do that. It literally is at the bottom of the neighborhood. So although the ridge is going to increase by about eight feet, the, you know, they're not going to be blocking anybody's views or having any negative impact on the neighboring properties. In fact, when you look around, immediate. In fact, when you look around, the immediate homes immediately across the street, as some of us are wont to do, they're all two-story homes that are substantially larger than the Blythe's home. The design is, you know, traditional. Want to put the design up, Karen? Elevations. Yeah, so the design's very traditional. And the, I think it fits well into the neighborhood. Although, I have to tell you, if you drive down Kitty's Lane from Forest Beach Road, there are a couple of pretty strange-looking homes on the right-hand side, which shows you how tough it is to, you know, build in that neighborhood because the lots are so small. Most of them are between 8,000 and 9,000 square feet. So anyway, that's the, so I think that it's a tribute to the Blythes that they're able to put a conventional design that solves their problems, but doesn't overwhelm the neighborhood in any way. So just run through the criteria here. The adequacy, the size of the site, in terms of size to propose use. The building meets all current setbacks, 25 feet from the road, at least 15 feet from each sideline, does not exceed the 15% allowed under our zoning bylaw. And the ridge of the house is going to be two feet below the maximum ridge of 28 feet, where 30 feet would be allowed. Compatibility of the proposed structure, and we have done the numbers again, and the, you know, we're still, you know, a small home in a neighborhood where we have a lot of different size homes. So I think, I think you could say that it is very much compatible. Again, the only increase in non-conforming nature is the increase in living area. We think the site is suitable. We don't have to worry about runoff going anywhere else. This is all going to stay right on this lot. The impact of scale, siting, and mass on the neighborhood visual character. Most of these properties were developed in the late '40s and early '50s. And so really, all the Blythes are doing is taking a small cottage and bringing it to the modern day without going to excess and using a very traditional design. So I believe that structure is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure. Compatibility of the use, it's a single-family home in a single-family neighborhood. You know, the septic system is going to remain the same. Impact on traffic flow and safety is none. Same thing, no change in noise in the litter. Utilities and public services are adequate. So I think that you could find that this property is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate. Nobody is here to speak in favor? I will read the correspondence. There is only one, from Judith Giorgio, our health agent. She writes, "On May 20, 2024, I reviewed the plan to demolish the existing dwelling and rebuild a new dwelling. The planned dwelling will maintain the two-bedroom layout of the existing dwelling and use the septic system. I have no concerns about this project." Anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against or has a question about this application? If so, please make it known. Seeing none, questions from the board? Dave Veach?
I have no questions.
Dave Nixon?
None.
Ginny?
No questions.
Lee?
No questions.
Lee?
No questions.
Well
No questions.
I don't have any questions either.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
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 And Paul?
Yes.
As do I. Deliberations, Lee?
Okay, well, I think this is a great project. It meets all the criteria, and it's a very good example of a house fitting in nicely to the neighborhood. So if I were voting, I would vote yes.
Very good. Steve?
I feel the same as Lee. I think this is a nice project. It resembles a lot of the other houses in the neighborhood, and I think it will be beneficial.
And Ginny?
I agree with you, Mr. Riley. I think that it was a nice proposal, and I agree with my colleagues that appreciate the desire to expand, and it's a nice plan to do that, it fits in the neighborhood.
Okay, Paul?
I agree with my colleagues' comments.
Dave Nixon?
Yeah, I wish that this is what had happened in the previous application.
Yep, so does Mr. Riley.
It would still be on the hill, so.
Dave Veach?
Yeah, I agree with the previous comments from my colleagues, except I'm not sure I agree with Mr. Riley.
All right. What about conditions?
Yeah, that's fine, okay, so
Ma'am, just so you know, it's not okay to talk from there, but you're welcome to come up to the mic.
No, the, because of the tight neighborhood, they're willing to accept the usual summer prohibition against construction, outside construction.
I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30 and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work should be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Dave Nixon?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
That seems to conclude our agenda for today.
I will move to adjourn.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Dave Nixon?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Well
Yes.
As do I. Okay, what time is it?
5:14 PM.
All right, good night, Chatham. Thank you, everybody.